Good evening and welcome to the April 20, sorry, April 16th, 2024 meeting of the City of Beacon zoning board of appeals. My name is Jordan Haug and I'm the chairman of this board. Tonight we're joined by my fellow board members, our attorney, our secretary, and the building inspector Bruce. Thank you for being here, everyone. The application materials that will be discussed tonight, including any proposed resolutions and other documents, will be available on the city's website. Also on the city's website is a link to the rules procedures of the zoning board of appeals. And just to briefly explain our procedures, we will take and hear each application in the order that it was noticed on the agenda. For each application, we'll first hear from the applicant and then we'll open the floor to comments from the public. If you wish to comment, please step to the podium when called upon and clearly state your name and address for the record. All comments should be directed towards the zoning board, not the applicant or city staff. We ask for you to refrain about a five-minute time limit, which doesn't seem to be too worried about that this evening. One thing to note, we are a five-member board. There is one absence tonight. Our board, you need three votes, no matter how many persons are present. So if you are the applicant for a variance, you'll need three of four possible votes for tonight. You would need three of three if there are three people in five, or three of five if we had a full board this evening. That's just something to note. If you are applying, you could always ask for an adjournment. With that, I will take a motion to call to order the meeting, please.
Motion open.
Motion from Montes. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second with Elaine. All in favor?
Aye.
Has everyone been able to review the minutes of our March 19th meeting? And are there any comments, edits, criticisms, praises?
I was absent, so I'm gonna just be quiet.
I have praises, therefore I motion accept the minutes.
Great. We have a motion with Montes. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Elaine. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Abstention from Stowe, as he was not here. And then can I have a motion to open the public hearing on agenda item number one?
So moved.
A motion by Stowe. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Montes. All in favor?
Aye.
Agenda item number one. I think it is, yes.
Hi, I am Jody McCreadyo. Thank you all so much for being on the zoning board and for hearing this. So I live at 11 Highland Place and probably about a year ago now, the planning board approved a subdivision directly across the street from me. And there are now four houses where one house once stood on my tiny little 20-foot street. And because there is no access on either of the side streets where that lot is, all four houses come and go directly opposite my house. My house is 20 feet wide. It is a very, I'm sorry, my street is 20 feet wide. It's a very narrow street. And one of the things that many of my neighborhood neighbors repeatedly said to the planning board when that subdivision was in front of the planning board, is that the street simply is not wide enough to accommodate all of those new houses. I brought some pictures for you to see what the street looks like with cars parked on both sides of it. So I'm just gonna hand those to you so you can pass them around. And in the time, in the few months since this construction started, there have already been two car accidents right outside of my home. One of them was my own car that somebody backing out of one of the driveways across the street smashed into the back of my car and left. And I didn't realize that until I saw on my Ring Doorbell what had happened when I noticed that the back of my car was all smashed in. So basically, exactly what we said was gonna happen, happened. And now here I am because the only thing that I know so that I can get my cars off the street. I did not realize that I was going to need a variance for that, but apparently I need a variance for that. But I feel like I'm doing a service to my community by putting this in because, as you can see, when cars are parked on both sides of the street, the garbage trucks can't get through. Amazon trucks have had a hard time getting through. Regular cars can't drive through. It's just, it's, it's just become an impossible situation. And I feel like, well, I know that putting this driveway in would alleviate a lot of that pressure on really my entire neighborhood because with cars parked on both sides of the street, you just can't drive down my block anymore. So that's where we're at.
And the street you're referring to is Highland Place, formerly High Street, right?
It's always been Highland Place as far as I know. There's another High Street in Beacon, but
Yep.
So Bruce, can you just explain the code so everyone understands what it is and what, why we need a variance?
So the reason, so the reason that they need this variance, is they're planning on putting the, you know, the driveway or parking area in the front of the house. I've agreed that there was an existing gravel driveway off to the, I believe it's to the right side of the property, correct?
Yeah, if you're facing the property, it's on the right side, yes.
And that one I wasn't, that one I'm not concerned with because that was previously there. So with the new section of driveway, which is the circular driveway in front of the house, and the code specifically says in there that
Yep.
But it actually, you know, it says in, in any residence district, no off-street parking facility shall be developed in any required front yard or in any required side or rear yard adjacent to a street line. So, and I believe this is something that's gonna be, I guess, a little more clarified in the future if the city council changes the parking regulations. Just to be clear, that there's to be no parking in the front yard.
And is it your interpretation of that portion of the code to be a choice of aesthetic? Or is it, or is it functional in any way?
I think it's more aesthetic. I don't think, you know, functionality, I don't think it really affects anything. As long as, you know, they're still able to clearly get in and out of the house without, you know, blocking the front door.
And, and as far as the aesthetic goes, because I certainly do understand that, that's been an issue in my neighborhood. That's why we wanted to do a circular driveway. I'm certainly not wanting to just gravel the front of my house. There's a tree in front of my house that I'm quite fond of, so we would put it around the tree. I have no intention of, of disturbing that tree at all. I still want to have green space in the area around the circle. You know, obviously I live there. I want to make it look as nice as possible. I just want to have a place to park and, and keep our cars safe.
So what's happening to the gravel that's there now?
So the gravel driveway is still there. The issue is there's no sidewalk on my street. And, well, first of all, the gravel driveway isn't enough space to park all of our cars. We currently have four cars in our house, not including like, you know, parties and company comes over. There are four cars that live there and there's not enough space for that. But also, when it, when it snows or when the ground is wet and muddy, there's no access to my house from that gravel driveway. And from the circular driveway, we would actually be able to get in and out of the house without walking through mud and snow.
Would you consider extending that gravel driveway further back into the yard? Then you wouldn't need a variance?
So my yard is on a slope and if we were to extend that back, then it would kind of be downhill the rest of the driveway. It would make it very difficult, especially in the snow, to, to clean it and to get up out of it. It would also be difficult because we all come and go at different times. And so the cars in front would be blocking the cars in back. We wouldn't all be able to park there at the same time. I just, I don't think that would really work.
Are you proposing to remove the gravel and replace it with grass?
No, we would still have the gravel because, like I said, we have four cars now and then we have other people. There's, there's just no room to put the cars. But, so there's a, there's a house right around the corner from me on 67 Grove Street. And they have exactly what we're proposing. They have a circular driveway in front of their house. And then they have another driveway on the side of it next to it in order to park their cars. It's literally exactly that and it's right around the corner from us.
Are they a grandfather den or the one she's referring to?
With the, the gravel driveway that's currently
No, she says there's another one.
The 67 Grove.
67, I'm assuming it was, yeah, that was grandfather den. Yeah, I didn't, you know, I don't know when that was actually done. I don't have any records of it. Unfortunately, there are a lot of, you know, these situations, you know, throughout the city. But I know that the previous inspector to me and also the previous inspector had, you know, had handled this the same way, pushing these towards, if there was to be parking in the front yard, I believe there was variances for those situations.
What have you done in the past when there's a snowstorm and you have to get all your cars off the street?
We've usually ended up just parking on our grass because we haven't had enough space.
I see. So in effect, you've been parking in front of the house.
Yeah, I mean
During the snowstorms because you had to.
Yeah, we, we really haven't had a choice because there's no place else to put the cars. And this would be nicer than that because, you know, we would still Yeah. And we would still have the grass out front. We still have grass on both sides. We would still have the tree.
Aesthetically, it'd be nicer.
Yeah, if aesthetics are the issue aesthetically, it would be much, much nicer to do it this way.
Can I ask a question too? Is there a Mr. Scully involved here? Because it's on the, the memo from Bruce. It says, "Dear Mr. Scully."
Yeah, I wondered about that too. I'm not really sure. I don't know if he was filling out a
Your memo.
That's, that's a standard denial letter that I produce for every variance application. You know, basically citing the code that's referred, you know, that we're referring to for
No, no, he's saying the recipient says, "Dear Mr. Scully." Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm thinking you're just using a form that you had used before.
Probably, yeah, maybe I just use a previous
Yeah, that has nothing to do with us.
That's fine. Would you, would you be open to the new and removing the gravel?
If I had to, but I don't really see, like, why would I, why?
Well, I mean, if I'm reading this, it's a small spot lot, right? It seems like it comes across as mostly your front would be either gravel or blacktop, right?
Well, it wouldn't, I mean, again, we're not blacktopping the whole front of the house. So the gravel is off to the side and then in front of the house, it would be kind of a U. So we would still have a nice green space right in front of the house and we would still have more green space to the, to the other side of it. So we're not really blacktopping the whole, and we're not blacktopping the gravel. We're just keeping it gravel so that we have, you know, like, like Stowe mentioned, when it snows and stuff, we still just need places for the other cars to go.
Has there, has there been any discussion at all with the traffic safety committee about getting the street to be one-side parking only?
So that was something that I was concerned about. I brought that up at the planning board meeting. And at that time, they had checked with the traffic and safety committee. And at that time, they didn't, they didn't see that there would be a problem. They didn't think that that would be something that they would need to do. But there were a lot of things that I thought would be problems that nobody else seemed to think would be a problem when this was being discussed originally.
Well, I would say those pictures should maybe be forwarded to the traffic and safety committee.
They were.
Just as a suggestion.
No, they were. I mean, while, when this project was in front of the planning board meeting, printed them out, but those pictures are from things that I had brought to the planning board meetings when this project was, was in front of the planning board. As my way of saying, like, this isn't really appropriate for such a narrow street. But everybody seemed to think that it was fine.
Sure.
And here we are.
Now, that's the house, right?
Yeah.
I, I don't see the slope that she refers to.
The slope's here.
It's behind the, the gravel driveway, so it's going back.
Ms. McCreadyo, if I, if I may ask, is the driveway, the gravel driveway that you're referring to, I'm just looking at a Google Street View right now, is it currently gravel? Or is it this grass area here?
It's gravel. It's, it's overgrown a little bit because we haven't really been taking care of it as well as we should, but it's gravel.
So it's, I think if you guys are looking at the Google Maps, I think it's where the
To the right, next to the
The barbecue and that kind of stuff are right now. It's not the yellow car.
No, it is the yellow car.
Oh, it is the yellow.
Yeah, the yellow car is on it.
So, okay, so your property line goes all the way to like the white picket fence?
Oh, that white fence.
Yes.
I still can't see the, I can't see the
Yeah, it's a wide, it's a
If it's the yellow car.
No, it slopes back behind the yellow car. So like
I mean, it doesn't seem like a big grade, right?
Well.
My, my basement is above ground, so in, in the front of my house, you walk into the
Okay, alright.
The, the front level, but then if you walk down the hill, there's a door directly into my basement. It's, it's pretty steep slope.
Yeah. How many cars would you say you can fit across from, from the, where your property begins to, I guess, where it would be considered the front of the house now?
I'm not sure what you're asking.
So he's asking, what is the side yard, what is the actual side yard from the house to the property line? What's the distance from the house to the property line on the side yard?
On the side?
Where the, where you have a, it looks like a yellow part.
Probably about 50 feet.
About 50 feet. And how wide is the gravel driveway now? I'm sorry, it's hard to kind of read the rendering that is given to us.
Yeah, sorry. It's, it's about wide enough for three cars. It's like just wide enough for three cars that are, that are really close together.
And you're saying you need four cars?
We currently have four cars. So I have a car, my husband has a car, my daughter has a car, and then we have a work car that, that all live at my house. And my son is gonna be getting his license eventually as well. And then my mom stays over sometimes.
So how, how much farther, how much lower is it if you go to the back of your house? If you were to extend the gravel driveway, you currently have farther back?
It's, it's a full level because we have a walkout, like, we have a regular door leading into our basement in the back.
So at 50 feet, you could go three wide. In the, in the, in the depth that the gravel is now, with a 50-foot width, you should be able to go three cars wide, right?
Yeah.
And then if, if the variance was granted, how many cars do you think you could fit in the space that you would create?
The U-shaped driveway?
Yeah.
I would say three more.
So I think the concern of the board, right, is that in theory, if we granted the variance without getting anything back from you, you could three-car it on the side and then three-car it in the front. And then you legally have six cars, you know?
So I could reduce the gravel driveway. I'm, I'm okay with that. But again, we, we do have the four cars that we need to
No, I, yeah, I think, I think that was the question you asked, right?
That's right.
Yeah, okay. Alright.
I mean, I really just, my, my main issue, we don't really park in the gravel driveway unless it snows. So for the most part, we've always parked in front of our house just because it's easier to come and go from the front of our house. And we can no longer safely do that because our cars are getting hit. So
Parking in front of your house on the street?
Yes. Yeah, I feel like we've kind of lost our ability to park on the street because of what's happening across from us. And so because of that, we saw this as the solution.
Reiterate that, why, from what's happening across the street? Have you lost your ability?
Because there's no room.
Coming out of the driveway on the other side of the street are driving into their cars.
This is being developed now.
We've had two accidents and then when, when cars are parked on both sides of the street, you can't, you can't drive through. So my concern is if, I mean, there, there's a new baby on my street. There's elderly people on my street. If, if God forbid, an ambulance or a fire truck needed to come through, there's, there's just no room. And on the new houses, they have that, that driveway going back to the houses in the back. If, if a fire truck or somebody had to turn on that street and there were cars parked on both sides, I just don't see how they would do it. I just feel like it's a safety issue to, to not have cars there at this point because it's, it's becoming dangerous.
In essence, what your argument, well, maybe the subtext of your argument is, you're trying to do this because the street is no longer safe for people to continue to park in the pattern they used to.
Exactly.
Park on the street because it was convenient or they had more cars than they had parking spaces for or whatever. But now with the new houses built, there's too many cars on the street for it to be safe. With your car accidents and the problems with the garbage trucks. I, I don't know if there has been an issue with fire trucks. Has it been?
Well, there hasn't yet. I'm just, I'm saying that that would be a concern because I know that it's difficult just for the garbage trucks and for even Amazon vans to get through. So I can only imagine a wide fire truck. You know, when I think about possibilities, that's, that's my concern. It's, I think it's definitely a safety issue at this point.
And if you don't mind, Bruce, I have a question for you. I don't know if you, if you can answer this. There is indeed enough space in front of the house for the circular driveway, I'm assuming?
I didn't hear the whole thing.
There is enough space in front of the house for the circular driveway, right?
Yeah.
Okay, alright. I just wanted to make sure because I see this tree and I know you want to keep the tree, so I just wanted to make sure it all, it all fits there.
Yeah, I was just looking at the, you know, at the survey. So the, for the frontage across the front of the property is about 100 feet. I think that the majority of that right-hand side is enough to put three cars at a, at a maximum. And then with the driveway across the front, you know, there's one, you know, maybe two small cars could get squeezed in there. But it's not a, it's not a very big lot in the front. There's not a lot of room there. But there's enough, you know, to put a driveway off the, you know, off of the street.
How far is the house set back from the road?
Just, I can't read the number on here, but I want to say, just from being out at the site, I'm gonna say it's probably somewhere between 15 and 20 feet.
Wow.
I mean, I don't want to be doing this. I, I really don't. I'm already like $1,500 into this as far as the variance and the certified letters and everything that I had to do in order to, to get to this point. I would much rather be home right now, doing the things that I need to do and parking in front of my house like I have for the past 18 years that I've lived there. It's been working for me so far. But the past few months have really, it's just been brutal. It's just been brutal for my whole neighborhood. And there's already, you know, the people moving in, the, the couple that moved into the first house have a nanny and the nanny's been parking on the street and other people have been parking, and there's just, there's just no room. And like I said, two car accidents in, in five months when there's never been a car accident in the 18 years that I've lived there. It's just, it's, it's really an issue and this is the only way. I, I feel like I'm sacrificing to solve an issue for my entire neighborhood. This is, this is what I'm here to do.
I didn't understand that part. So this solves your entire neighborhood? Is that what you're saying?
It solves this particular problem because people can't, are having a hard time driving down my street.
And you're the, you're the house across from the, the, the street that's now a driveway to four houses?
Yes.
So you're right there?
I'm directly opposite that driveway. So people are constantly coming in and out of that driveway directly opposite my home.
It's interesting because in some neighborhoods that were constructed with this kind of configuration from the beginning, they would have potentially zoned the sidewalk on your side so that nobody could park there.
I mean
And that
It's, it's a fear of mine because I don't want that to happen because then I have no place to park and
No, no, I understand. I'm just saying, if, if it had been designed that way from the beginning, you might have said, oh, this is a dangerous place to have parking because people are gonna back out of this driveway or driveway.
If it had been designed that way from the beginning, I wouldn't have bought my house there. I mean, if I had known that any of this was gonna happen, I wouldn't be living there because this has been horrible for us. And I'm just trying to make it a little bit better. It's, it's, it's been really awful.
Alright, anyone from the public, would you like to speak on this application? Please step to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Teresa Craft, Ward 3. I support the applicant's request to relocate the driveway for the house situated at 11 Highland Place. This was a concern that was raised during the planning board process and all the public hearings. I was at everyone while approving the high-density housing project across the street. The project was expected to affect the parking of existing residents in the neighborhood and their quality of life. And it has unfortunately come true. Please let this go through. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Jim Beckman. I live behind, I live at 16 Overlook Avenue, which is directly behind 11 Highland Place. I can also verify that there is a very extreme slope that would make it very impossible to add additional parking on the downward slope on that side. I think that what she said has been true about, it's a very narrow road. And if people are parked on both sides, which is similar to Overlook, I think Overlook's a little bit wider. We don't have side rocks on Overlook either. And it's a really challenging plate, situation if two people are parked on this, on, like, across from each other. So I support her building this circular driveway. It's very similar to the house that she mentioned on Grove, which has a rock instead of a tree, kind of like buffering that, that parking area. So I think that ultimately it's going to look a lot nicer than the current situation on Grove, which, you know, they've done a good job, but it's just a little bit more green space that, that they have. So I'm in, in favor of her putting in this driveway.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm Dan Malway. I also live at 16 Overlook and I just echo what the two people before me have said. They're good neighbors and they take care of their yard and I don't see an issue with this. She's mentioned the increased traffic and that's without all the houses being occupied. There's still, some of them are still in construction, so I would only imagine it's gonna get a lot worse with parking when people are actually living there. So I approve. Thanks.
Thank you.
So where is the, I'm sorry, I'm asking all these questions, but I don't have a proper survey map to be able to understand. So I'm asking, the grade of the earth on the side of your house? So if that gravel driveway were, it looks like, at least from this two-dimensional picture here, right? It appears that the driveway, the gravel driveway can be extended back before it hits the slope. And it appears that it can be widened to accommodate at least three cars in the front, right? And potentially go back a little further if, if you wanted like a fourth car or whatever.
It really can't. There's, so, there's, there's definitely not enough space behind it, as, as my neighbors had mentioned. There just really isn't enough space behind it in order to do that. And as far as extending it out, if
When you say extend it out, you mean widen?
Yeah, to make it wider. We would lose access to our backyard. We do enjoy having a side yard. We do enjoy having that green space. It would, it would be a detriment to our quality of life if we were to do that because that's all, that's all green space that we use.
And I think what I heard from the building inspector was that it's about 15 to 20 feet from the road to the front of your house. 15 to 20 feet, right?
I believe it's more than that.
From the front of the house?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd say about 15 to 20 feet.
Really?
On the road, yeah. So if, if a
I, I don't know.
If a driveway is Just kind of gauging in from the survey that was provided. If a driveway is, call it 10-foot wide, right? That means you would have about five feet of grass from the road to the driveway to your front door. And then the driveway to your door, right?
Okay.
I, I'm asking.
I don't know.
Asking because I don't have a survey map, so. Is that, is that fair?
I'm, I'm not really sure. I know that we, we had looked at it with somebody who does driveways and we kind of spoke about where it would be and, and walked around the yard and it just, it made a lot of sense to us. We have a deck on the side and there would still be access to the deck. We would still be able to have the tree and we would still be able to have the access to our backyard in the back. And we would still have the green space in the front. It would just alleviate the safety concerns.
But you want both. You want the rounded driveway plus the gravel, the existing gravel. You want both?
Yes.
Would it be possible to regrade the side yard so that you could extend the existing gravel parking area farther back? Enough so that you could get at least a fourth car in there?
That would be even more expensive than what we're proposing and we've already put a lot of money into this.
Price is not the only consideration that we
I, I don't know if it would be possible. I, I don't know if it would be possible. I know that it would disrupt the, it would just we, we, we wouldn't be able to come and go then because we'd be parked behind each other. We would constantly be having to shuffle cars around.
Well, if it's, if it's three across now and you put a fourth one behind
Oh, you mean behind it you're talking about?
Behind, yeah, farther back. If you graded the ground so you can support a fourth parking space farther back. Stowe, you might want to look on the map. Yeah, I, I was just looking. Oh, you have your computer.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see how that would work. When we, when we spoke to the, the person that was gonna do the driveway and we spoke to a contractor about it, it just didn't make sense to do it that way.
The way it cur, the way it currently is used
The way it cur- the way it currently is used,
Yeah, you can see that it drops off, but if you freight it behind it.
The way it's currently used, is it one, would you say the, is the gravel driveway one spot? For one car, I guess, or is it more than that?
In depth, you mean, right?
It's three wide.
No, in wide.
Oh, in width.
Right, I mean, so,
It's three wide.
It's three wide.
We don't generally use it for three, we generally use it for two, so the yellow car stays there and then my daughter's car stays there because it's new and we don't want it to get hit. And, um, my husband and I usually park in front of the house. And then that, that extra spot is, is generally for when it snows.
The, and you, is it fair to say that the yell- where the yellow car is, at least on the Google images, and I assume if it stays there, it's pretty consistent, it's directly across from, like, if that drove straight, it would go right into the,
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
And the issue is you have a maroon van in front of it. The issue is when you have a car there, it blocks the entrance to the development, is that what you're saying?
No, I don't think there's an, the, the,
I guess what I'm asking is,
When my car got hit, it wasn't parked in front of the,
What, what, I guess what I'm unclear of, what's the issue with parking three cars there that you have existing today? And parking your fourth car down further so it's not in the way of the new construction entrance?
So when my car got hit, it was parked directly in front of my house. It wasn't near the driveway, it was past the driveway, it was directly in front of my house and a car backing out of, a truck backing out of the other driveway backed out and made the turn to go straight on Grove and backed into my car. And then the other issue again is that when there are cars parked on both sides of the street, it's just not really safe to, to drive through. Because there's not enough space, because the street isn't wide enough.
Thank you.
Sure.
I think if safety is a concern, you're asking her to park her three cars with a fourth one in front behind her house, they're all going to have to back out into this dangerous intersection?
Or back into the driveway?
Yeah.
One or the other.
I mean, whereas a, a U shape that can come and go, I just think that that's more of a hazard backing into that traffic.
So let me just reiterate what the concern is, the concern is three cars on a U shape, three cars on the gravel, is six cars permitted in a front yard? On a one hundred by a one hundred lot? When the code doesn't allow that today, so we're really trying to understand the, things like the non-self-created hardships, right? And, and as well as the other factors that would go into our determination.
I thought Bruce said that he thought two cars would fit in the circular driveway.
It probably would be two cars in the circular driveway because I, I do think you're right, it would be two cars in the circular. I was, I was thinking about the other driveway, it would, it would be two cars in the circular and then the gravel driveway is, is the side yard, it's not the front yard. Um, and none of this was created by me because I didn't want any of this, I, I don't want any of this, I don't want to be doing this, I don't want to be spending this money, I don't want to be, I don't want to be doing any of this. But in the past few months, it's just, things just keep getting worse and I've spoken to contractors and I've spoken, like, I've spoken to a lot of people to say, what can I do? Because this is a bad situation, I'm afraid to live here, I'm afraid to have my daughter driving in and out, I've already had my car hit, I've already seen another car hit, I don't know what to do. And this was, this was the only solution that was given to me that really made sense and so I spent a lot of money trying to get this, this solution to happen because it's the only thing that makes sense to me.
Bruce just reiterated that it would either be two small cars really would fit, or one larger car, it wouldn't fit three full-size cars in that driveway in the circular.
I couldn't hear you.
Bruce reiterated that in the circular driveway, it would fit maybe two small cars or one regular or larger-sized car. He didn't see it fitting three cars in the circular driveway.
Yeah, I misspoke because when I said three cars, I was thinking about the, the gravel driveway, not the circular driveway because we wouldn't be able to have three cars there.
So I think, um, you know, to the board, my, my concern, uh, is that Bruce doesn't get taken away, but, uh, besides that, um, is, is that we don't have a, a situation where we grant a variance and then someone could max out, right? Like, in other words, there are going to be three and then two, so I think for me, um, if, and I, I don't have a problem with the vari- to, you know, to get, we have to give, so it's, you know, to me, if, if safety is a concern, you know, I think if we, you know, if right now, if they, if they have three and she's saying she needs four and she can get two here, then this needs to be eliminated as a, a possible parking spot. And not only that, it would, from a safety perspective, no longer be across from the access. So that, that's something that I would propose, so as far as restrictions are concerned, if, if we were to grant a variance, can we, can we give a variance and then take away a portion of?
It would be, the, the variance can be granted on the condition that the gravel driveway, let's call it, is narrowed. And you could say, I, I don't know what the number of feet is, but like ten feet, five feet, whatever it is, the car's width from, you could say from the property line in. And so it's not giving and taking away, it's just a condition reasonably related to the safety and to the, the purpose and, and protecting the community in that respect.
So what I'm, what I am thinking about and kind of talking about out loud would be essentially the giving up, the surrendering of the use of where the yellow car is parked, which is directly across the street from,
The driveway.
The, yeah, the driveway into the new development as I would assume that would be the highest probability for accidents to happen coming, you know, directly across. And for other reasons, but giving you the, the variance for the driveway, so essentially you're, you'd be gaining net, net one spot on your land um, by the two cars in the area where you would like to have or you can't currently, but giving up one where you currently can.
And, and getting the curved driveway right in front of her front, front step.
Yeah.
So I understand what you're saying, that my only issue with that particular spot is, um, for one thing, it does have, so, it's a three-car gravel driveway, but that spot on the end does have some blacktop remaining from long before we bought the house, so I don't even know how we would go about getting rid of that. But if we were to narrow the driveway, if we were to narrow the driveway on the side toward our house, then we would be adding like kind of more front yard and more green space. If we were to narrow the driveway on the other side, then that's kind of,
It would be,
We wouldn't be able to use it.
Grass, but it'd be far, far away from your house.
Yeah, it would just be like, it, it wouldn't be usable, like, it wouldn't be part of our yard, you know, if we, if we did it on the other side, we could make it part of the yard, we could kind of make it pretty, but to, to rip up gravel and then try to make grass grow that, like, I just,
Yeah, no, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, and the other point that occurs to me, right now you have that yellow and black striped car, which is the one you don't move much.
Yeah.
So if it's farther away,
It doesn't move much.
Even though it's right across the street from the driveway, it doesn't come and go very much.
Correct.
The thing that, where you have the real transit every day is going to be, in a hypothetical situation, would be the U-shaped driveway.
Exactly.
And then Bruce, just, um, you'd mentioned, is, is there potential, uh, or proposed, um, ordinances regarding this issue?
Yeah, so there are some proposed changes to the zoning code that's been in front of the city council for a while now. They're actually looking at changing the parking standards, they're going from, uh, minimum, you know, from a maximum, or sorry, from a minimum parking standard to a maximum parking standard. Currently, I believe, um, for single-family houses, a minimum of two parking spaces required. Uh, I believe, once the change has been made, I think they're going to try to go to three maximum.
And there will be one minimum, one will be the minimum.
One minimum, three maximum.
So that, I mean, I know that they're discussing that, it hasn't passed, um, it, it seems extremely counterintuitive to me when, if you ask pretty much anybody in Beacon, they will tell you that parking is an issue and that there's not enough parking in the city, so I don't really understand why that's even a consideration at this point personally, but, but I've, I've lived in the city for almost twenty years, I've been very involved in the city for twenty years and, and I know that, um, the city needs more parking, so I don't really, I don't really understand that.
And there's the added wrinkle now with ADUs where ADUs require another parking place if you have one, so.
Yes.
Well, we're not a full board, so she should have the opportunity if she wants to.
Yeah, well, that's true. So then if I flip my hypothetical deal, um, whereby you gave up the ability to park on what is the, say, leftmost third of the current available parking?
The part closest to the house.
Correct, is that something?
Yes.
Okay.
That would make a lot more sense to me.
Mm-hmm, alright, so, um, what I will say is, as I said before, we are a five-person board that is currently a four-person board, um, and you need three votes for a variance. Um, would you like us to close the public hearing and decide this application tonight? Or would you like to request an adjournment for a time when we have a five-person board?
Well, that depends on how you're going to vote.
Can't tell you that.
Of course it does.
I don't know, I'm kind of scared now because I, I'll, I'll be perfectly honest, I've spoken to quite a few people in the city who told me that they really didn't see this being an issue at all and most people just build their driveways without even getting the permits and I'm doing everything the right way and, and I thought this was going to be kind of a technicality, so I'm kind of a little bit thrown now because I don't really understand the issue here.
Well, I think, I think the issue, my issue, uh, which, you know, I can speak to my issue is, is, you know, what, what would hap- not what would happen, but it's just, it's the maxing out, right? So again, if we grant the variance and then you, you would, you could have one, two, three cars where you currently could have and then an additional two cars, it's just, you know, I think,
And park on the street.
Well, I wouldn't be able to park on the street.
Well, you could legally could.
You could.
Not, well, right, because it's my own driveway, yeah, I see what you're saying.
Or, or somebody else buys the house from you two years from now and all of a sudden there's seven cars always in front of your house, one way or the other.
So I,
I mean, I don't feel safe parking in my street anymore.
Understood, understood, it's just from,
And, and you've heard from three different people in my neighborhood who have all said that as well.
I'm not trying to give you a hard time, I, I just, it's, we have to, you know, and we constantly get reminded, we have to grant the minimum variance necessary. So what, what I'm, what I am trying to do in my kind of brokering and talking, talking it through is, okay, well, is there a way to, you know, to get, to give, again, for you to give to get, and so,
So would, so would we be okay if I did the circular driveway and then took away one of the three spaces on the gravel driveway?
You would have my vote.
That's, that's his hypothetical. And before, I was not implying that this was self-imposed, right? What I said was one of the factors that we have to consider as such, right? Another factor, and we'll go through the factors when it comes time to vote, when you make a decision if you want it tonight or postponed. Another factor we'd have to consider is, is, is it substantial? And I'll, I'll tell you my viewpoint, your ask to me sounds substantial, given the size of that lot. As well as the placement of the house on that lot, being fifteen to twenty feet from the road. It's one, again, it's one of the factors, it's not necessarily the ultimate deciding factor, I'm just telling you, from my perspective, it does sound substantial. And as, as our chairperson said, we are to grant the minimum requirement, right? So that's why we're asking you all these different questions to kind of understand the rationale, et cetera, in the ask.
The rationale is for the past eighteen years, I have loved living in my home. And now my entire family hates living in our home and I'm trying to make it a little less horrible.
Again, with all due respect, what we have to protect though is, as the ask is right now, you could potentially get five cars sitting in your front yard. You could potentially get another, however many, sitting on the street in front of those five cars legally.
So again, if I do the two in the circular driveway and then the two in the other driveway, that would be four cars, so would that be?
It's a question of the vote to the board, I can't speak for the colleagues.
Can you tell me your opinion?
No, I will not tell you my opinion until we have a discussion and a vote.
Yeah.
And, and Ms. McCready, I just want to clarify, uh, the chairman's question about whether or not you want to postpone, um, correct me if I'm wrong, it's not indicative of any way in which they're voting, this is an option basically automatically granted to each applicant when a board member,
No, I, I understand that, I'm just, I'm, I'm kind of, so if they vote and they vote no and I don't adjourn, then I'm, I'm just done and that's it?
It sounds harsh, but the, the, the ability, if a vote is taken and there's a denial, the ability to then come back and apply for the same thing is, is very, very limited. Um, so essentially, yes, but again, that's not to say that you would be denied, it's just an option that you have. Um, and I think this dialogue is good in terms of, you know, two, two in the gravel, two on the front. Um, that, what, what the board keeps reiterating is that the variance is run with the land, so they sort of have to think long-term and, um, to that extent, I'm not familiar with, with the procedure. Is there a possibility that this road at some point, they say no parking on that side of the street?
Sure.
And, and which case then it's only four cars maxed, for example.
In theory, right?
Yeah, in theory, yeah.
And I think to George's point, that's our concern, right? At so- at some point, you're no longer going to own this house and so if this variance is granted, you know, I'm just trying to mitigate the whole front yard filled with cars and then cars parked on the road legally and then there's no enforcement ability from the city. So it's like if I can get at least one enforcement issue, right, like, that's better than zero?
Well, there's also, also the precedent for the neighborhood, if seven other people come forward and say, I want to put in a circular driveway, she did.
Well, but again, we have them in our neighborhood, like, I've, I've seen them all over Beacon and there's one, as, as has been mentioned, there's one right around the corner from me, so that's,
Sure.
Right.
That was kind of my issue too, like, we saw that and we said, oh, okay, well, they did it right there, this shouldn't be a problem, I, you know, that's kind of where I'm coming in with this.
So when the, when the Highland Place project across the street from her was in front of the planning board, they had referred it to the, um, traffic safety committee.
And that, just, Bruce, just to, um, just to clarify, that's a separate committee that,
That's a separate committee, that has nothing to do with the planning board, that's,
Do any planning,
You know, the police chief and, um,
Fire chief.
Uh, I think DP, I think, um, the highway superintendent, I think they're all involved with that.
Fire chief.
Yeah.
Does any planning board member sit on that committee or no?
Does who?
Does any planning board member also sit on that committee?
I believe so.
I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Yes.
Do, is there one member of the planning board as a liaison?
I've attended the meeting, so occasionally.
Okay.
Yeah, so with that, I mean, with everything that has gone on, I mean, again, she, um, Ms. McCready has brought up about, you know, the safety issue on the street. You know, now with everything going on, maybe it could be referred back to traffic safety committee? Before you render a decision and maybe that can be, you know, if you feel necessary. But I know that George, you know, is probably not familiar with that process.
Yeah, I'm not, openly, I'm not familiar with the traffic and safety, any conditions on the variance? Uh, I don't know that a condition that it gets referred back and that is acted on is an appropriate condition per se, but absolutely, I think generally speaking, from what I understand, this probably should be discussed at, at, with that committee at some point, but this is not that committee.
Sure, yeah, I, I, so on a personal note, I have dealt with that committee in order to get, um, I, my office is on a road where, um, one-side street parking is available and logically it made sense for it to be on the other side of the street based on curb cuts. And so I had to go through that process and so it, it's just a process that you can go through, um,
I went, I went through the, the, two different times I went through the committee to get new stop signs put in in neighborhoods.
Yeah, so, okay. The first question is, would you like us to close the public hearing and proceed or would you like an adjournment in order to have five members present when we adjourn the public hearing and proceed?
To be clear, in that, if you were to choose that route, again, it's fully up to you, you can submit, You can submit, you know, additional drawings or you can submit, hey, this is what, given your comments, this is how I revised it, this is how it would look with two cars on the gravel driveway. You have the opportunity to submit additional materials if you were to choose that, that route.
I agree.
And it would be nice to have a drawing with actual new measurements so we could see the actual distances.
But
If you went that route.
Would it cost me any additional money in the escrow for the, the variance? Because this is, this has been a very expensive process.
It, yeah, I mean, um, I, I don't handle explicitly with how the escrow accounts are set up, but the escrow is based on, um, my understanding, it's basically a formula of what the expected cost would be. And if you come for a second meeting, it could be the case that you have to deposit more in the escrow. It could not be the case. I don't know. I'm not familiar with how much the escrow is. So I don't want to say one way or the other. And of course, the escrow, whatever's left at the end is, is given back to the, uh, yeah.
Yeah, I was counting on getting some back to actually pay for the driveway because this is really, um, not something that I want to be doing.
And again, it's, it's fully up to you. You could obviously proceed with the vote today too. That's, that's fully up to you. The board is not going to push you either which way. I'm not going to suggest you go either which way. I just want you to understand that there is no right or wrong way. It's, it's up to you as the applicant, um, with no indication that if you go today, it's definitely a no and if you come back, it's definitely a yes.
Right. No, I understand that. So it's just going to hang over my head for another month.
Yeah, look, it also gives you the, the month to think about potential alternatives based on some of the questions and read that you're getting.
I mean, I've spent the past five months looking at potential alternatives because this wasn't something that I wanted to do. I, I really, I don't know what else to do at this point. I guess I'll go with the adjournment. Thank you for your time.
All right. Very good. Uh, so can I get a motion to adjourn the public hearing to the May? Sorry, can I get a date?
Motion to adjourn to the May meeting.
Second.
The May 21st meeting of the zoning board appeals. Motion by Montos, second by Elaine. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um.
Mr. Chairman, before you proceed to the next item
Yes, they need to do an arraignment?
Yes.
Okay. So, uh, we are going to briefly adjourn our meeting as the court needs to conduct some business.
You can probably go for 10 more minutes. Um, the defendant's going to come up here, you're going to be spoken to in that room and then we'll, we'll make you this for probably 10 minutes max.
Okay. Very good. Yep. Oh, of course.
No, 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 just, it's going to happen.
Yeah, we're, we're just, yeah, no, we're
Deal with this business, that's all. It is happening.
And you can stay in the audience. It's not a closed door for everything, so you don't have to leave.
Thank you.
All good? All right. Okay, uh, we're back. 8:20, 8:28 PM. Uh, can I have a motion to open the hearing on agenda item number two, please?
Motion to open agenda ni, item number two.
Motion by Elaine, can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Montos. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You're up.
Hello. Um, thank you for coming back and for your time. I'm Julia Rexson. I purchased 48 Church Street earlier this year with my husband, um, planning to renovate that house for our family. Um, we drew up our plans with our architect intending to build an addition that did not extend the footprint of our house. Um, it was a logical place to build the addition. From all the contractors and tradespeople that we've spoken with, there was an existing first floor that wasn't fully boxed out. So that was the best place to build a third bedroom so that we have
I'm sorry, could you pull the mic a little closer? Thank you.
Can you hear me? So that was, um, the logical thing to do to build the addition would be to box out the first floor and complete that second floor, floor plan so that we had a, we went from a, um, two-bedroom, one-and-a-half-bath house to a three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath house, which is a decent size for a family.
So if I understood you correctly, you have an existing one-story there you want to build on top of?
We want to build directly on top of it. So that
Are you changing any of the footprint of the existing story?
We're not changing any of the footprint of the existing house. The reason that I'm here is because when we filed our building permit,
Yep.
we were told that there, that we needed a variance because of the setback. The existing condition of our first floor does not meet that setback requirement. Our understanding and interpretation of the code is that a variance is not needed if the existing condition and the existing setback is unchanged. And that's what our renovation plans are.
You, you lost me on the second part because a variance would be required.
A variance is required, yes.
Yeah. What did you mean by your understanding?
Our understanding. When we went into
Oh, you thought
That was what our understanding is. When we were drawing up the plans, that we're not changing the footprint of our house at all, so there would be no need for it, but
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, but the zoning law actually says that if you have an existing variance, if you're going to build, you still have to require, you're still required to get another variance.
Yes. So that's why I'm here to get that variance now, yes.
Understood. Bruce, anything, uh, to note about the site or?
Um, no, there's nothing special about the site.
It's very special, Bruce.
But it's, again, she's just, I'm sorry, but, um, the, um, there's
Unique.
Again, the, the original, the original submission was to build all the way out to the, um, to the outside edge of the, um, I think it's an addition on the first floor that was built. And they're just looking to build a complete story above that, uh, at the second floor level. Um, and, you know, then that same footprint.
Sure. Got it. Any, uh, questions from the board?
I have a question if I may. I just want to clarify, right now the house is one-story or there is a second?
There is a second story, but it's not, the second story is not the entire footprint of the ground floor.
So this is an addition to the
Second story.
Making the second story full?
Yes. It's a second-story-only addition.
All right. I just wanted to understand that, okay.
Okay. Anybody from the public? Nobody from the public is here. Um, can I have a motion to close the public hearing on agenda item number two?
Motion to close.
Motion by Montos. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Stowe. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
All right. Thanks, everyone.
We didn't
Oh, I thought that was for me.
So the procedure
We haven't voted yet.
The procedure is, so we just closed the public hearing and now we're going to go through our factors. We, we didn't get that. We didn't get that far in the first one. Um, because she asked for an adjournment. So uh, as to whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the area variance, the board finds that.
I do not think an undesirable change will be introduced, especially given that they're under the existing footprint and they're going to be leveling out with what's already a two-story there.
Yeah, it's an existing non-conforming and it's just
I agree.
raising the second story.
I also agree.
I also agree.
As to whether the benefit the applicant seeks can be achieved through another method feasible for the applicant to pursue that does not require the area variance.
No. I don't see how you could. You, the lot's small, there's no to build out, would be worse.
I agree.
There's always the subterranean option, but no, there isn't.
I think
It's not an option. There's a very wet basement.
That's where the word feasible does a lot of heavy lifting.
Right, exactly.
Uh, as to whether the requested variance is substantial.
It doesn't appear to me that it's substantial, especially the fact that it's uniforming the entire structure and it's sitting within the existing footprint. Doesn't seem to be substantial.
I agree.
I agree.
Yeah, I mean, the whole math thing, but yes, in context, it is not. Uh, as to whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district.
No.
Agreed, no.
No. I don't think it will at all. Uh, as to the, as to whether the alleged difficulty is self-created.
Yes.
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 That's not a bad thing.
It's okay, yeah.
Uh, as to, uh, whether or not this is the minimum variance required.
Seems to me that it is.
Yes.
Yeah, yes.
Yes. All right. Um, so normally, uh, when, um, we're about to grant a variance, uh, we put restrictions on and the restrictions are, general, our general restrictions are that all fees are paid current, uh, with the city naturally. And then, uh, a building permit is applied for within
I believe it's, uh, six months.
Six months.
Six months and a year?
Six months, um, typically six months from the date of the resolution, so six months from today. And commence construction within six months following the issuance of that permit. Um, and then complete construction and CVO have to be obtained within 24 months after the date of the issuance of the permit.
What if we already have a building permit for a separate plan that we submitted?
Yeah, let me explain. They did apply for the building permit. They were granted a building permit for other work and work based upon a different plan that didn't require a variance.
So will this
So they do have, so the building permit is really a non-issue because, um, if you grant the variance this evening, the architect will resubmit the plans, amend the permit to fill what they actually wanted.
Yeah. So once you amend the permit, you're getting it six months from today, so that's not an issue. Commence construction within six months from amending it? Is that an issue?
Start tomorrow.
Great. And then
Even better.
And finish within two years?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not a problem.
Right.
Okay, all right. Uh, all right. So I will take, uh, I'll take a motion.
Motion to approve adhering to the requirements of paid and full, everything is just
Right, understood.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Second, all right. I will call the roll. Elaine? Yes, Stowe, sorry about that. Elaine?
Yes.
Montos?
Yes. Stowe?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Uh, can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second by Montos. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And again, to note, uh, the next meeting is May?
Second?
No.
No.
Twenty-first.
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 May 21st, 2024. Thank you. Have a good night.
Good night. Good job as always.
Yay.